Andrew Agby, Matthew Baumgarten, Donna Gerfsey, Pedro Idracopoulos, Jennifer Dunne, Andy Gabbel, Lawrence Gallagher, Andy Gilbert, Eli Hurwitz, Landon Knox, Mitchell Moses, Teo Pasalakwa, your daughter, Brian Schnicker, Laima Dykes, excuse me, no one else is excused.
Donna's on the line. I'm sure that Metro knows his face and I don't have any knowledge of it.
So a motion to approve the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Removed.
Second?
Second.
Awesome.
Discussion items.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the Coolidge Right Sizing Metrics and Draft of Resolutional Support? Is it a discussion now or later about that?
Well, once somebody makes the motion, then we do the discussion.
To approve it?
Is anybody gonna make one?
I made the motion to approve the grant matrix.
Support? Oh, better.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion. Sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, so, um, so as you know, we are bringing the Coolidge Road Resolutional Support, which isn't in, um, available yet, Matt, and is still fine tuning that, um, you will be able to see that tomorrow. Uh, it's really not as relevant to this discussion as this metrics, matrix. Uh, at the last council meeting, um, the, the council was asking for a lot more as far as, um, uh, comprehensive metrics and how we would do the measurement for those. So that is where we've come up with this Coolidge Right, Road Right Sizing and Safety Quarter Metrics, Matrix. This basic matrix was pulled from, um, uh, I had gone online and done quite a bit of research and we pulled this off of the state of New Mexico's, um, website. They do a significant number of road diets and this is a similar metrics, although we have spent quite a bit of time over the past week fine tuning it to fit exactly what our needs are here. But you can see that it is very comprehensive, that it looks at all the project elements, including roadway function, operations, and environment, safety, community, and multimodal accommodation. So under each of those sections, then, we have deliverables, so roadway function fits within right-of-way, you know, safety, all of those, um, uh, individual metrics that are included under there, same with the community. Because the goal here is to look at this project, um, not just from one viewpoint or another, but to be able to look at it comprehensively. And then, as we do the measurements at six, 12, 18, and 24 months, to be able to see how that baseline has moved. In the first column, um, we, we met for about two and a half hours yesterday with DPW Public Safety, Matt was there, HRC, and Spalding to Decker. Um, we had, uh, both Derek and Sean from DPW, we had both Colleen and Roland from HRC, we had Cheryl from Spalding to Decker. Matt King was there for DPW, or the Public Safety. And we went through this very, very, uh, line by line, and everybody is very comfortable with where we are. We set kind of the before-road diet baseline score. Um, you can see from the document that you got that that one equals very poor, two equals poor, three equals neutral, four equals good, and five equals very good. On any elements that we didn't feel like we had any enough information to rate it specifically, we just rated it at a three, which is the neutral. There are also boxes in there that you can see are cross-hatched. Those cross-hatched boxes mean that during that time period, we probably don't have enough data available to quantify. So the score during, uh, in those time periods where there's a cross-hatch box will remain what that previous column held. We'll also have DPW monitor maintenance activities, including sweeping, plowing, and patching. That's not, um, into that specific ma- metrics, matrix, but they will do a written report at the end of, you know, year one and year two. So, um, so what I think is important for the board to do, because these are metrics and measurements that we will be partly responsible, if you look at the measurement tactics column, you'll see that there are areas of, um, where we talk about visual assessments or shopper intercept surveys, business online surveys, uh, those types of things. We'll probably be calling on our volunteers, board members, to help out with that, as well as, uh, city residents who might be interested in doing things like visual assess- assessments or intercept surveys. Um, in the economic development portion, uh, you can see we'll be asking our businesses to do some intercept surveys too, on, uh, you know, things like, uh, how easy it is now for a comfortable parking experience, you know? Are we seeing, uh, more shopping activity? Uh, do we feel like it's encouraging business property ownership developer investment? Those are things that, you know, we'll be looking, uh, to pull some of our business owners in to help us out with also. Um, you can see TIA is, um, frequently mentioned as measuring. Uh, that's the Traffic Information Association. They are the ones who did the, uh, initial, um, traffic analysis for us a year ago. Um, some measurements, uh, you just can't get at six months. Uh, they take 12 to 24, particularly, uh, the economic development measurements, which is why we're recommending this goes up to 24 months. Um, if you guys are comfortable with this, then the next step would be to vote to approve and support it, um, as the DDA, as the Board of DDA, and then it would go into the packet, um, for, uh, Monday evening's meeting. And that's the background.
So what constitutes that the road diet isn't working? These numbers going down, or?
Well, yes. So as you can see, if, if, right now, you can see they're averaged, um, which is, I think, actually, Matt's new intern Dan suggested averaging them, because it's an easier way to view each category against each category. You look right now, total average score for Coolidge is a 2.5. There's nothing about Coolidge that is functioning at, you know, a good or very good level on average. Uh, so what, what we want to see is these, these numbers move, yes, up to the above, to four and five, meaning these things are functioning well. Um, and, uh, and then, you know, we would track that at those various timeframes, and then at the end of that 24 months, you know, you would be able to say, hey, look, this is how the needles move.
So what changed between the graphs that went out, the one that went out a few days ago and the one that was updated yesterday?
Um, we changed some of the baseline scores. We added, uh, we took out, um, access, uh, number four and changed it to travel time. We added, uh, we broke out level of comfort for pedestrians, level of comfort for cyclists as two separate. We, um, broke, uh, the parking question into provides adequate parking, provides a comfortable parking experience. Uh, we added, oh, and multimodal, we split that out, so it says handles pedestrian demand, handles bike demand. We added integrates micromodal, uh, accommodation, um, looking to the future, uh, at things like birds and, you know, what else? We finessed some of the measurement tactics. Uh, I can't tell you exactly. Um, we added, uh, DPW's monitoring. We, um, we included in there what the hatch boxes mean, so that, that's clear why they're hatched.
Is the, um, so then with this matrix as it stands, is the, the city is then comfortable with the criteria outlined and the city is comfortable with the timeline of 24 months?
Part of the discussion, the timeline used to happen here, but this, uh, we did do a, part of the review that we did yesterday, as Vivian mentioned, was with, um, Public Works Foreman and Director, and Public Safety Director as well, as well as the city's engineers too. Um, so we are, this is sort of a group effort here, and we're a lot more comfortable now. Ultimately, it's a decision of the city council if this adequately captures, um, what they want to see as far as the evaluation for year goes.
And the timeline discussion, I think, will come into the, um, financial impact, so the next agenda discussion.
So, but check-ins, the, one of the things that the city council had mentioned in their previous discussion in the December meeting was having, um, periodic check-ins on whether this, the evaluation was trending. And so, uh, to just wait, you know, 24 full months and then figure it out after that was, um, not favorable. So I do like the fact that we're checking at six months, 12 months, 18 months.
Yeah.
And because it's likely going to be at least a year or so of data needed in order to make at least a traffic safety decision.
But you, so you and I would agree that the check-ins are, this, the intervals between check-ins is appropriate, and we do have the, some categories require different amounts of time to measure than others. Is the city looking for some sort of ability at 12 months, say, to interject and say, hey, trends are, trends are headed completely in the wrong direction per, you know, our feeling or our, you know, we want to, we want to move up the timeline in this or the other?
Um, I can leave on the next conversation, but yes, from a traffic safety standpoint, I think 12 months is an appropriate threshold to say, is this thing, from a traffic safety standpoint, is this thing trending in the direction we thought it was going to, or is it not trending in the direction we thought it was going to, so?
And per today's conversations, today's, the vote that's being asked from the board is to approve this matrix, you know, this timeline.
Yes.
I think the board's appropriately recommended by me.
Yes.
To, on the matrix to the city council.
Is there any way to, the numbers don't seem specific enough. The matrix is great, I mean, it covers so many things and so many people look at it, they know a lot more about this stuff than we. But the, the numbers, I wonder if, just going out, can you do up to 10? So if there's an uptick, 2.6, 2.9, it's much more specific to be able to grade it other than quarter points or full half points.
Um, like I said, we, we pulled this off of, um, you know, the state of New Mexico's. They do it by a single point. We looked at a lot of other metrics. They seem, most, um, of the metrics seem comfortable with, you know, giving something as very poor, poor, neutral, good, and very good. I'm not sure how you would determine that, uh, you know, once again, I think you have to sit down every six months and then, you know, pull in all those measurements, sit as a, a team like we did yesterday, and then determine, you know, have we moved from neutral to good? I mean, I'm not sure how you would decide what gets a 7.5.
I don't know how you have to, I don't know that you have to name each one as much as it is for one to 10. Uh, it's not quite a seven, it's a six. I mean, it's more specific. It would be more difficult to do, but it would also be more specific numbers. I mean, I'm just looking at, um, 2.5 for one of these categories.
2.5 is what the total average score was.
Or two for one.
Everything, no, but nothing is, is a point in the categories. They are all scored from a one to a five.
I'm just afraid in six months, it's going to be a 2.5, or, or.
It may be.
If, but if, then we don't know about a tick, so it should be 2.6 or 2.7. That, that's all. I'm just trying to say, nobody agrees with me, and that's okay, but it seems like it would be better gauge to expand the numbers, that's all.
Yeah, I think sort of you'd be a quality of trying to be too finite with these types of feelings and sentiments. Uh, I, I think this is really fantastic, though. The categories all seem really appropriate. Um, I, I especially appreciate the measurement tactics column. This is the first thing I ask, always a question of these numbers is, how are they, how are they measuring that? That's really responsible. I think this is really prudent, right? And this is wonderful.
You said we don't have a definition of what equals a four versus a very poor versus a neutral?
Well.
Like examples of what that would be?
So, for instance, right now on travel times, it's, it's at a three, it's neutral. We don't know. I mean, we don't know if, because we haven't done any, uh, research, um, you know, if, if we find that travel time suddenly increased by three minutes to get from 11 mile to 12, then that's going to move into a very poor. If it increases by 20 seconds or 60 seconds, you know, that probably makes it stay at neutral or it equals good, because that is still, but that's where we have, I think, each, you sit down with everybody, um, you know, our traffic engineers, DPW, this is exactly how we scored it yesterday, that the entire team sat down and said, yes, I'm comfortable with this being a two, a three, a four, or five. Um, I think at some point, you can get too complicated, um, and, since, so, I mean, the group that met yesterday was comfortable with the scoring system.
And they included the city engineers.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Spalding to Decker, that was HRC, that was Roland and Colleen, that was Matt King in Public Safety, it was Derek, and it was Sean from DPW, it was Matt, and it was myself.
Right, it keeps, it keeps it from being too subjective to the individual perceptive perception, and then also, I accept, brings in a multidisciplinary approach to, to this review as well.
Is there any cost involved with all the measuring tactics?
There shouldn't be much of a cost involved. TIA does, uh, theirs, because this, uh, the city pays in, they actually, just like with the road diet, the things that they do for the cities who are members of TIA, they do those things as a, um, a free, uh.
It's, it's a perk of membership, so.
Yeah.
It's a subscription service that we pay.
Right.
Through RAC 51 funding, uh, and then they give us access to all those membership benefits from the association, so. There's not a per item fee for each one of these, it's just covered on a subscription.
How about the engineer and, and so does other ones?
So we already contract with Spalding to Decker, um, so anything that we ask for falls under that contract, because we contract with Cheryl Gregory from Spalding to Decker on an annual basis. A lot of the online survey stuff, it's just free, obviously intercept surveys, that's where we're asking volunteers and the board to step up and help out. Um, you know, for the visual assessment, we, uh, I, I mean, the only thing that there might be a cost is if when, uh, we look at perhaps a public input session, there would be some cost that I would expect the city would share with the DDA, um, to, for, you know, any sorts of visuals or expertise that we would bring into there. But outside of that, I don't see any specific cost that's going to come into the DDA outside of what's already covered under Cheryl's, um, contract.
So it's a very well thought out matrix. Uh, it's, breaks it up, six-month increments. It's, um, it's going to give everybody good or bad feedback, whatever it's going to be. Uh, there's independent people reviewing it, uh, and then the only question is the, um, is the council going to go with the 24 month versus, when I was there last week, it sounded like they were more interested in a year.
Yes, and we'll discuss that moment under the next board.
So one thing I'd like to add to kind of your highlight is, the other thing that I appreciate about it is, is that it's, it's based off of a matrix that existed already, correct?
Yeah.
So the most important part of that for me is we're not reinventing what we are here. This, this has worked in other commu- in another community, it's what they did, obviously we tweaked it for, you know, a few of our own things, but it's huge.
Well, and we've done, uh, I mean, over the past week, I've spent quite a bit of time just researching how other communities track. This is much more comprehensive than the majority of, uh, the communities that are doing road diets, but it does hit, it ticks every single box that other, uh, cities are, or even the state, is looking for as measurements. So we've ticked every major box plus added, you know, that's specific to our particular project. Any other discussion? If you guys are comfortable with it, then I think Andy can call the vote to, you know, support spending this in the council.
If there's, if there's still a conversation about timeline, is it, is it an empty, is it an empty practice to vote on this now?
Well, I think either way, we're going to ask council for 24 months. There may be something in there that, I mean, this is, this is what the DDA board should be re- recommending to council, in my opinion. If you guys aren't comfortable with that, we can hold the vote on this, we can go and discuss that, and then come back and vote on this.
Not that I disagree with the 24 months, if, if it's ultimately pushed back on, we'll have to revisit this again, correct?
Yes.
I guess we'll worry the other way. If that scenario plays out one way or the other, we're talking about again, so.
Can we adjust both?
No, we need to do one at a time.
Okay.
So we put our best foot forward?
Uh, you know what, for tracking, it, keep in mind that, you know, the DDA's mission is, are, we are required to focus, you know, on growing the business district. We are the organization that's charged with making the business district more economically, a stronger business community. I mean, we're here for the purposes of economic development. Those things, you know, when we're tracking economic development, they can't be tracked in six months or a year. I mean, they can't.
Yeah, I think, but in 24 months, you say, where do we need to propose?
So we have to, we have to recommend, based on that alone, that, you know, we have to have a 24 month. Now, if you choose to say we're comfortable with 12 months, and we take away the 18 and the 24 months, then just know that we're taking away our ability to track whether or not this is working as an economic development tool.
I think, I think we need 24 months.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
I think 12 months is way too short to track some of this stuff, and certainly with the kind of money and time and effort that's gone into this, to do a knee-jerk reaction at 12 months, um, that's a lot more data. I agree.
Even, um, the Federal Highway Authority, I mean, they suggest tracking three months for, I mean, three years for, you know, traffic-related issues, and we're not even going out to that place. I mean, over, again and again, they talk about making sure that you have as much time to gather data as possible to make sure that, you know, you can look at a project like this comprehensively and not, you know, just based on what happens within the first year.
But is it, I'm sorry, man.
Please.
Well, I mean, for me, but it sounds as though, and I know that we still need to discuss these things, that the city has some points to be made, you know, on the timeline. So I feel like, you know, and again, I'm not, I'm not going at this from any massive level of experience from being, I don't know, 1,000 boards in my lifetime, but it seems like we would want to hash all of that out so that what we are sending to council is, is what is in agreement between the city and the board. Now, if, if this was put together by the, you know, by multifaceted, we've got consultants, we've got city, we've got DDA, we've got the whole show, then it seems to me that, that this, in its current existence, would be fine. This is the approved of this matrix today, and it goes, come on Monday, they decide what they're going to do with it, but it has our backing. But does it, does it have the city's backing?
Well, we won't know until it goes to the city on Monday. We can only do our best. Now.
Well, by city, I don't, I guess I'd take that, I guess I, by city, I mean, like, you know, man, the city department's council is, I guess what I meant, is it goes to council on Monday for their support.
Yeah, we won't know until it goes to council. It certainly has the backing of every city department that is involved. But if what you want to do is table the vote, we can table the vote, we can go on to the next, and then we can come back and vote on these two items.
I mean, if I'm, if, again, if I'm the one that feels this way, that's fine, you know, vote by majority. I just feel like there's other things on the table to discuss that have a relevance to this, and how we support it and how it goes forward, regardless of how that conversation has to take place, I feel like maybe it should before the vote. That is just me.
Are you behind this 24 months, Matt?
Uh, what, I, I, I need to jump ahead a little bit, but I think it's perfect to have a check-in at 12 months for the traffic safety portion of this, and have that evaluated, whether or not we proceed to the full 24 months. So what I'm talking about is a midpoint evaluation, specific to the traffic safety component of this, to make sure that we're trending in the right direction before we proceed all the way to 24 months.
But what parameter, what would be a pull the plug on it?
What's indicated, the items that are indicated in the traffic safety.
But how much lower, what if it goes down a little bit, what if it goes down a lot, what if it goes up a little bit, what's considered failure?
That part, we can, is open to discussion.
What about, are there, are there any, are there any points where we can intervene and?
So this is where I think.
This part.
This part of the discussion moves into the funding discussion, because the funding is tied to the timeline. So I really would like to just put the timeline, because it is definitely tied to the funding and the financial impact, into that second discussion item. So if you guys want to, to make a motion to, um, hold off on voting this until we discuss the next item, I'm fine with that. We just probably need to move this along.
The funding meaning, how is it tied into the funding?
Because we would be paying for restriping.
Okay. I make a motion to pass this as is, 24 months, as the matrix is.
Okay. Give me a second.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, give me a. So we still need more information before we make the final vote? That's what you're saying? We get, we can get more information if we just put this on hold for a minute? Is that what's going on?
There's, you're not going to get more information about this matrix. The matrix that we send isn't going to, I mean, this, this is the matrix that I think needs to go to the council. This is a comprehensive matrix, it's the way the project should work. We will talk about timeline and how that might impact this, but I don't think, unless you guys feel like the timeline discussion is going to encourage you to say, okay, let's just send them a matrix for 12 months, then I, I just don't see how it changes what this matrix is skewed for.
I, I support the matrix.
Yeah.
And I support all the work that went into it. I can only imagine, right? We're all coming off two holidays, and I know people worked through their breaks to put this together. I have the utmost support for the matrix. What I want to understand is implementation benchmark, and make sure everybody is on the same understanding about what those are, because I think we're just asking for a big misunderstanding if we don't. That's just me, and I, I might be nitpicking this a little bit too much. I just, it's not the matrix to me, it's the, it's the implementation, it's the understanding of what happens at 12 months, what happens at 24 months, how does it get paid for, all that kind of stuff. And it seems as though, if there are impasses on those items, that voting to approve this seems empty to me. That's.
And can you make a motion?
No.
To that point?
Well, we got a motion on the.
Right.
We don't have a second.
We never got seconded.
I would, I would second it. I, I.
Okay.
Think it's appropriate to vote on this, I, I think it's complete and it's full, and going 24 months is, putting out 24 months worth of data, hopefully we get to that point is, is appropriate. We'll talk about what some of the columns mean, but I think, um, I. We'll talk about what some of the counts mean, but I think, I, I support the matrix and the information that it's used together.
Okay, so then you have to call the...
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone again? Okay.
This is where I think we need to go into an executive session, so, because I think that there are some sensitive issues that are potentially legal issues, and I would prefer, I think that those are things that need to be discussed in an executive session, so we need a motion to go into an executive session. Which is a closed session, so our visitors would have...
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, so you guys will need to leave.
How long will it last? Will it last the entire time, or?
As long as the discussion takes, and then we'll open back up, and then we'll leave with them.
Okay.
Wendy, you'll have to turn off your camera.
We'll use the twenty-four month matrix and do a twenty-four month review to evaluate the success of the restriping of the road diet, with a twelve-month public safety review that will review the metrics of the public safety column, and that we allow city council to possibly vote or put the striping back the way it is. If that takes place, there'd be a funding, partial funding from the city to cover the restriping that we would, the DDA would repay with the city, and that agreement would be mutually redupped on between the city and the DDA.
Have a friendly amendment, that we just say that, you know, should, that we just say a repayment agreement would mutually develop between the DDA board and the city of Berkeley?
Absolutely.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Board of Director comments. Do you want to have any other opinions? Public comments, do we have any public comments? Public comments? Nope. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, guys.